Welcome to the September 25, 2023, meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by myself, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Lord, be with our government officials and their staff as they deal with the challenges of today. Give them wisdom on how to best represent everyone. Father, we also ask that you give our leaders courage so that even when it's hard, they will continue to boldly represent their constituents' needs and those of the most vulnerable among us. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Myers, we call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Meinter?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Pajali?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
I will ask for a motion to excuse Mr. Murray, although I think that he is going to be with us. I think he just is slightly tardy, but I will ask for a motion to excuse him in case he doesn't show up at all.
So move.
A motion and a second discussion. No objection. That motion will be approved in hearing no objection. Mr. Murray is excused until he shows up. Commissioners, do you have before you the minutes of our meeting of September the 11th, 2023? What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the September 11th meeting and dispense from the formal reading.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. No objection. That motion will be approved in hearing no objection. That motion's approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium and share with us your name and address and your agenda comments. I'd ask that you keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Ashburn. I reside at 2112 Parkview Boulevard, Sandusky, Ohio. I have a question about item two. Is the South Side Steering Committee going to be a part? Are we going to be a part of the design for Churchill Park? And also, the next question, the vacant lots that are in MacArthur Park, are they for sale to the public?
Thank you, Ms. Ashburn. We'll answer those questions as we get to that agenda item. The additional comments from the audience on agenda items only. If not, we will move to a very important segment of our agenda this evening, and that is the Volunteer of the Year Awards, which that committee has been chaired by Commissioners Waddington and Commissioner Pajali, and I will turn the floor over to them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is our third year that we've done this, and hopefully they continue it for years to come, to recognize folks that give up time, not always compensated, that do outreach programs in our community. And we'll get started with our first one, and it's Scott Matheny. Scott's professional career includes 38 years as a teacher, coach, and principal for several school systems, including 20 with Sandusky City Schools. While Scott was the Jackson Junior High Principal in 2005, he came back from a school conference with the idea of the Sandusky Schools Gentlemen's Club that is presented in the, it's in its 17th year. The first group of gentlemen were 12 eighth-grade students. Scott has also been active in the Community Celebration Committee members since 1997. He volunteers for the Tuesday Night Summer Concert Series, the Downtown Holiday Lighting, and Santa Cookie House, and the Stars and Stripes July Fourth Celebration. We thank Scott for, I'm wavering, dedication to our children's education and to our community. And if you'd like to say a few words, Scott, you weren't happy to.
Scott didn't know that was part of the program.
It's been my great pleasure. I've been the, I've loved working with the children and the adults in the city of Sandusky for many years, and it's my great pleasure tonight to share this award, Dustin, in just a moment here, and certainly, we started this program, and Dustin has grown it exponentially. And I'm so proud of the work that he's done and how that the Gentlemen's Club has grown over the years.
I could tell you the five folks that we picked this year at grocery stores or something, your name come up a few times. Mr. Jeffries, I got ahold of Mr. Coco early on, Mr. Johnson from the Warming and Cooling, and our Mr. Walters for years at Victory Kitchen, so that's all very much appreciated. And we'll go from there. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next recipient is Dustin Sharp. Geez, for a minute, I thought that was Luca Broczi with blonde hair. Dustin's a 1998 graduate of Sandusky High School, and he's been employed in education for 19 years. His volunteer activities include the Bike Week, cleanup, the Care and Share Food Drive, Ironman Safety Town, Touch and the Touch a Truck events. He is active in the district school events and volunteers as a sports coach. He is the current advisor of the Sandusky City Schools Gentlemen's Club, as Mr. Matheny mentioned, and has expanded it to the 7th through 12th grade students, averaging 40 to 60 members that volunteer for city events throughout the year. And if you haven't had the pleasure of dealing with the Gentlemen's Club, it will renew your faith in young people. We thank Dustin for mentoring students in this capacity and for showing them the value of giving back to their community, and that hard work promotes better citizens. Saint Mary's graduate, 1965 to be exact. I don't know if you wanted me to say that, Mr. Jeffrey, but he served on the City Commission from 1990 to 1997, was the mayor from 1996 through 97. Rick has served on the Sandusky Area Chamber of Commerce Ambassador Committee, the Elks, where he received the Hall of Fame Award in 1991. He was the Rotary Club President from 2000 to 2001, and the important thing there was he initiated the Pizza Challenge. He is the former Bay Area Officials Association member, and I see him on the sidelines at the Sandusky Games with the microphones commenting. The football game, I just wish he could get a couple of better calls for Sandusky High School in the coming weeks. He is an avid supporter of the Saint Mary's School and Church, serving as a coach. He served on the school board, the communion distributor, church finance committee, volunteered for bingo for 20 years. That's an important one. And I could go on and on, but currently, he serves as the county auditor. And my experience with Rick was, in my past life, when I worked for the city, he was on the commission, and he was always user-friendly, especially when it came to the Human Relations Commission. He was front and center, and he believed in people should talk to each other instead of at each other. So, Mr. Jeffrey, congratulations. Coco, did you want to say something?
Mr. Coco, you promised me you'd come up.
When you talk about volunteer, that's the man. Ask his wife, Gil. More things we should think of. It's a thought that deserves.
Thank you.
I have the pleasure of introducing our fourth recipient this evening, Pastor Luke Walters. Pastor Luke has worked at Victory Kitchen with his father, the late Reverend Lonnie Walters, and his family for 32 years. They serve 275 to 350 people daily and have served over a million plates to the hungry, the homeless, and the helpless members of our community. Victory Kitchen built showers with free toiletries for the homeless in 2016 to use. They built a pavilion where people can sit undercover behind the kitchen to eat, installed a drive-through window to serve hot meals on the go, and purchased a box truck for donation pickups. Pastor Luke does not stop his work at Victory Kitchen doorstep. Over 250 children received school supplies for the 2023 school year. 1,200 children received large bags of Christmas gifts for the annual Shoebox Christmas Program, and over $150,000 was given in gift cards to local families, and cold-weather clothing is provided as well to those people in need. Over 2,000 people have been rehabilitated and reintegrated into the workforce through his efforts. He's partnered with OSU Ohio Snap to educate financially insecure families on how to budget and use food pantry items to promote meaningful eating, with Phil P. Jr.'s Barber Shop and the Sandusky Career Center for Haircuts for Those in Need, and with Fireland's Regional Medical Center and Erie County Health Department with a pending installation of a medical kiosk in their dining room. We thank you for your relentless dedication to fighting hunger in Sandusky. You've truly made a difference in thousands of people's lives in this community.
It's my pleasure to honor Pastor Curtis Johnson, Jr., and I understand that accepting the award will be Reverend James Matthews, the Assistant Pastor for New Jerusalem Baptist Church. Thank you for being here, sir. Pastor Johnson is a Sandusky High School graduate. He has served as pastor of the New Jerusalem Baptist Church since 2009. Gosh, I remember when he was inducted. That seemed like it was just a little while ago. He has served as a member of the NAACP, as the Sandusky Ministerial Association President, as the Sandusky Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance President, the Union District Association President of Ministers Fellowship, the second Vice President of the United Missionary Baptist State Convention of Ohio. He serves on the Board of Directors of the North Coast Cancer Foundation and oversees the Kingdom Building Ministries, which is an outreach program for women and girls. Pastor Curtis was very instrumental, very instrumental, and this is something that doesn't get on the front page of the newspaper. He was instrumental in establishing the warming and cooling centers for the homeless, even opening the doors to his church, allowing people to escape the elements. Pastor Curtis's aim is to share the love of God with all he comes into contact with. His resolve is to exalt the Savior, equip the saints, evangelize the sinner, and explain the kingdom of God. And he has the best reason imaginable for not being here tonight. He's on his honeymoon. So, thank you, Pastor, for accepting the award.
On behalf of Pastor Curtis Johnson, Jr., I accept this award and this plaque with great humility. For it is because of the work that all of us do in this community, is what drives us each day to be better people, better human beings, and we go through this life. Thank you.
At this time, we would like to request that all the recipients come up so we can get a group picture. And I would also like to thank Kathy Myers for all the work she did on this. We just kind of say, Kathy, take care of this for us, and she does the rest. So, I appreciate all your work.
It's the plan, yeah.
To get in front or get in back?
Is there more you want to do?
Why do you get all dressed up for this?
Might we just have all the recipients up front?
Tom's just left us behind him. He fit in holes? Looks okay. All right.
You can see Tommy, you can see you.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Pajali, can you step to your left a little bit? All right.
Get behind all of us.
All right, one, two, and three.
Mr. Jeffrey, it's a requirement that former commissioners have to stay for the entire meeting. We're going to be out about eight o'clock. As I usually do at this point in time, we don't expect our guests to spend the next hour and a half with us going through legislation, so I'll give you a few minutes to head for the door. Pastor Walters is the first guy up.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for being here. You can run again, you know. Hey, Rick, you can have the seat for two years if you want.
I got it up across. Just keep it here. I got your bag over there.
Commissioners, do you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation? Can I have a motion to accept those communications?
So move.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. No objection. That motion will be approved in hearing no objection. That motion's approved. Commissioners, we have seven items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of those items to the regular agenda? Ms. Myers, do you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, approval of contract for waste vehicle inspection services with Erie County Health Department. Item B, approval of payment of 911 fees for 2024 to Erie County. Item C, budget amendment number five. Item D, approval of firewall and endpoint protection renewal. Item E, approval of grant application to Mylander Foundation for Fire. Item F, approval to dispose of unneeded items. Item G, approval of encroachment license agreement to Tony Stugout.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and resolutions, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meinter.
I move that we adopt consent agenda items A through G and declare that the resolutions and ordinances take immediate effect in full accordance with Section 14.
Second. Then a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed on first reading, and we'll come back to it for a second reading. Ms. Myers, you present item number two, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into amendment to the agreement for professional design services with Strand Associates Incorporated of Cincinnati, Ohio, for the Churchill Park Recreation Improvements and MacArthur Park Roadway and Utility Improvements Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, we had a couple of questions from a resident regarding this ordinance. I wonder if you can speak to those questions.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I'll take the first one, and hopefully I can turn the second one over to Ms. Gilson. As far as getting the public involved in the park design, I don't want to take the city manager's thunder, but in the manager's report, we are announcing that there will be a public meeting from 5:30 to 7:00 on Wednesday, October 11th, just to make sure that the public still continues to be involved and engaged in this project. As far as this legislation goes, we have begun the design process, and we're just proceeding with a piece that we had pushed to the third phase, which is just the survey portion for the final design piece. So we're bringing that into the first phase to make sure that we can use all the funding. So, this doesn't necessarily change what we were planning on doing. We're still going to get the public involved throughout the process.
And that meeting will be, is set and will be announced by the city manager. Great. Ms. Gilson?
Absolutely. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I believe the question is, will lots in and around the area be available for development? Under the guidance of my colleague, Ms. Blair, a planning process did take place over the last year, and the first pillar of that plan is the development of housing in neighborhood. So we will be looking at the houses that, I'm sorry, the lots that have been acquired throughout the years and put together some plans and some strategy for housing development that will most likely be made available en masse for a large developer to be able to provide affordable housing opportunities in the area. And I'm happy to speak with the person that posed the question afterwards to give a little bit more information.
Sure, sure. Thank you. And if you can make contact with Ms. Gilson and share your address and phone number, we'll make sure that she can have a direct one-on-one conversation with you. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, do you call the roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with RMH Concrete and Foundations Incorporated of Collins, Ohio, for the 2023 J.C. and Washington Park Concrete Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Meinter.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance and declare it takes immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I'm not opposed to building this structure at all, but I was opposed to where they put it, and I think it's important enough that I voted no when we started the project. I'm not opposed to them ultimately fishing it, but I do want on the record my opposition to where they're placing this structure. The, directly behind the stands where the people watch it, the end of the court, simply locks it in. I think the courts themselves are too small. I've said this many times before. The use of our facilities should be designed to provide the maximum good, maximum enjoyment of the people that use it. A standard high school basketball court is 50 by 84. Elementary, this court is, these two courts are 65 by 46. The placement of this structure does little more than lock it in so that we cannot improve the courts, and that's my concern. There's plenty of space out of J.C. Park. They could have moved it anywhere. When I asked why it had to go directly behind in the location that they put it, I was told as well, we think that people in the structure in here are going to be able to, in the picnic shelter, are going to be able to watch the game. Well, that's fine if you don't do the detail work and look and realize it's behind the grandstand. So unless the people are looking from there through people's legs in the grandstand, they're not going to see the basketball anyway. Likewise, I feel that the, that structure for picnics should be far enough away that what's going on at the basketball court doesn't disrupt what they're doing. We have three sets of stands there for people to watch the game, and if you're going to have a picnic, it shouldn't be backed up right up next to the stand, behind the stands. Again, I realize I have not had much success in enlarging the basketball courts. The size of them is smaller than or about the size of a sixth or seventh-grade court at the best, and J.C. Park happens to be the place where adults go to play. I sure, when I say adults, I'm talking about older teens and more. That's the only facility that we have where we can have, in fact, we actually put lights out there, which means we're doing nighttime leagues. Those are, those are adults. They should not be squeezed into that small space. It's not that the city cannot afford to do quality accouterments, quality court experience for those people to use that. I'm quite certain that when planning puts together the pickleball courts and the new tennis courts, they probably won't be 30% smaller than the regulation size. And so, for that reason and that reason alone, I'm voting no. This is not the best that we can do, and the people who are counting on us to do what, to provide them facilities, the concept that they can live with it, they should just be happy that they got something, doesn't work for me any longer. I can talk about other facilities that we've done the same with, but we'll keep it to this.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Commissioner Poole seems to raise some pretty important points. I don't recall what the response was to why it's proposed to be placed, where it's proposed to be placed. I realize this is just a request to go out and accept bids, and I would suspect that the location may be variable. I don't know if there are other utilities in place that make it not variable, but between the point in time that this is bid out, I'd like to get a little more input from staff in terms of why it's being, where it's proposed to be located where it is. I don't need it on the fly. I should have asked that question in advance, but the points seem worthy of exploring.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Through the Commission President.
Which line?
This is actually permission to award the contract.
I apologize. Mr. Chairman, if I may then.
Sure.
So, with this, we approve this legislation, maybe I need to get the law director involved here. What is our ability, if any, to alter the location? It seems like we're doing the same kind of work, but is, are we able to move it to a different location? And maybe we should just have the discussion now in terms of why it's being located where it is, for that far along.
Mr. Whirling, sounds like you might have an answer.
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Poole. The layout of the courts with the shelter where it was supposed to be is going to be, actually, the grandstands are going to move from that section, so then they're closer. We have a shelter that's close, kind of similar to Central Park. We've seen a lot of kids using Central Park in that shelter there, where they're just, they're hanging out, they're getting to play basketball, and it's become a place to gather. And we don't have a shade structure similar to that at J.C. Park, at the Scott May Courts. So the grandstand that Commissioner Poole is talking about is actually being moved, and then the shelter would be behind one of the courts, and then we'd have a grandstand at one of the other courts that's over there.
Thank you. That helps. Mr. Chairman, I may ask an initial question. One more question.
Commissioner Murray?
So, if I may, the other concern, that seems to address one of the two concerns that Commissioner Poole raised. The other concern centered on the size of the court and whether the placement of this structure where it's proposed would be an impediment to later on enlarging those courts. Can you address that?
With, yeah, through, Commissioner President. The new layout where the sidewalks would give accessibility to those courts would limit any expansion of the courts to the north, and they could be expanded if we were to expand them to the south of the area, if we expanded the courts. I think we haven't had a lot of public comments to, talking about the size of the courts, so that hasn't been something that we've had a lot of people asking. We've had, we did have a tournament there this past summer, the Street Ball Outdoor Classic, which was very successful, and these improvements are supposed to help with, you know...
limit any expansion of the courts to the north, and they could be expanded if we were to expand them to the south of the, of the area, if we expanded the courts. I think we haven't had a lot of public comments to, talking about the size of the courts, so that's, that hasn't been something that we've had a lot of people asking. We've had, we did have a tournament there this past summer, the Street Ball Outdoor Classic, which was very successful, and these improvements are supposed to help with, you know, the power hookups and then the accessibility of those courts.
Thank you.
Mr. Whirling, when you talk about the courts would not be able to be expanded to the north, but there would be another direction, does that mean that you could make them longer or you could make them wider? I'm not, I'm not certain on the, on the orientation.
The courts could be expanded.
The length could grow, but the width could not.
If you were going to expand the width, then you'd probably have to at least
Got it, okay.
figure out a way, because the lights do kind of hinder which way you can expand.
And you've, and you've not fielded questions regarding, boy, this court's really small.
That's right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Expanding these, there's not 20 feet to the south to move those courts. There's a, it's about, I won't cherry pick the distance, but there's a fence there and the sidewalk. The layout, it's, those courts are near the southern boundary to the, to the property. It's not, there's not room to put add 20 feet to make it regulation size. When I went out and measured again today, I did not bother to measure that because you can visually see that there's no way to move to the north, and that is the concern. Where they're putting, and it doesn't matter that you move the stand somewhere and then put the park, picnic shelter next to it. You can't move to the south, which is the only, to the north, which is the only direction that you could extend that. And he's correct, they put lights in, and again, it makes my point. They're going to play basketball games at night. This is adult kids. These aren't, these aren't six and seven, eight-year-olds. And so I think the court should be bigger. We had, I just think it should be, we should have better facilities. We don't cut, we shouldn't cut corners.
It doesn't, Mr. Poole, it doesn't sound to me like the public agrees with you. We're not getting concerns or questions from people to our recreation department saying, boy, these courts are too small, I can't play on them, or I won't play on them because they're too small, or it just doesn't sound like it's an issue for anyone other than yourself.
You also notice that you don't have anybody in here complaining that we don't have shelters at the bus stations when they, when people got to sit out in the cold. We haven't had people come in here from the bus, from the buses, transit system complaining that they've been turned away from the bus because, because the bus is filled. I mean, I could give you stories. Poor folks are happy to just get to work and be able to survive without the government messing over them. They don't complain, okay? That's how that works. They don't, they just, they just accept it. And I could tell you a really ugly story that I passed on to the manager about a young lady left just before that storm that we had several weeks ago that wiped out most of the trees. She got turned away from a bus at Sandusky Mall, and I happened to be leaving, driving, leaving work at 10:30, 10:15 at night, and picked her up just before that storm hit, walking down Mall Boulevard. She'd been told to get out of line so they could take one of, a Cedar Point person in, and told her to catch another bus at 10:15 at night. So don't tell me about, nobody complained. This is how, that's how the system works. And so I just, and this was small. We can afford to add, we can afford to build facilities for all elements of our, of our community that are the best that we can afford to build. And cutting corners, and we have for years, and I'm just, I've simply brought up, we need to, at some point enlarge these courts. It would be better experience for the people using them.
Additional comments or questions? Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I will say that certainly I do agree with some of Commissioner Poole's comments, and in the sense that if this could potentially prohibit us or prevent us from expanding these courts in the future, then I probably, you know, I'm probably going to have to vote no on this as well, just in hopes of potentially maybe finding another location, you know, for, for these facilities, so.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Just a legal question. We're at the point where we've requested bids, we've received bids, there's a winning bidder. What are the implications? Should the commission reject this legislation?
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Murray. If the commission, if fails, right, then, I mean, if the legislation fails and there's no expenditure of funds, the purpose of the legislation is to allocate funds. So Ms. Reader and her department, you know, when they get audited, there is legislation in place to support projects that the city endeavors to complete. This is just an award of contract for concrete, right? And obviously, there were dimensions that were used in calculating the amount of concrete needed, et cetera, for this company to win this bid. If it fails, it fails, and we can bring back new legislation and.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Is it a problem if they simply move it? There's plenty of space out there to put it. This, that's the only concern. The project doesn't change, you just slide it over about 40 feet or someplace, and so we have space to expand the court. At some point, don't lose the option when we get the votes and the support to enlarge the courts.
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Poole. That would probably take more, you know, planning with Aaron in the bid process. I don't know how much the relocation would change the bid process, right? You don't want to.
Becomes a change order?
I mean, it's a change order, but what I'm saying is if someone won a bid based on certain parameters outlined in the bid process, it may be impacted by the location. I'm not a concrete guy, so I can't tell you if the location would have changed, how someone would have bid. I mean, that's the only thing I would caution you on, but.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
It was mentioned that none of the city residents really asked for a longer basketball court. I'm just curious if any of the residents or people who use the park asked for a shaded shelter where they can have picnics or watch the ballgames, or is that just something we thought would be nice?
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Meinter. It was an amenity that we've talked about through the neighborhood funds that we had available of adding a shade structure there for when play is going on, because we noticed that, you know, there's, there was no shade structure that's there for people that are just playing the games out there and in between games or when you're waiting for next. You know, there's, there's really nowhere to, where to sit as far as a shaded, once the, there was a tree that had to be removed there when, when the courts were resurfaced, so they, that shade was gone.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. I just wonder, is there a way that this piece of legislation, maybe this is for the law director, the acting law director, could be tabled until we, we look into the possibility of maybe moving it to another location? Or if it can't be done, it can't be done, but at least we can come up with, try to come up with a solution.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move to table for the reasons articulated.
Second. It's been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a role in that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That motion is passed, and that piece of legislation will be taken. Ms. Myers, we present item number four, I believe.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Ed Burdo and Company of Sandusky, Ohio, for the C D B G Fiscal Year 21 Demolition Project Number Seven and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Myers, you call a role in that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Myers, you present item number five.
It is requested a resolution be passed approving and ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Ohio Department of Transportation for state fiscal year 2025 Ohio Transportation Partnership Program grant funds for the Sandusky Transit System and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a role in that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. That concludes our regular general. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I have one donation. Destination Sandusky in partnership with Great Lakes Audio and Visual is requesting permission to light Shade Mylander Plaza for the month of October in celebration of Halloween 2023. The lighting will enhance the visitor experience for downtown visitors while also showcasing the waterfront focal point during several October events with the Little Witch's Walk, Witch's Walk, and downtown trick-or-treat events. The lighting will be done by Great Lakes Audio and Visual, the same company to turn the plaza purple for Alzheimer's Awareness Month. We would ask the commission to accept this donation of services for the month of October.
So moved. And a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks.
And from Public Works, this is the meeting that was discussed. There will be a public meeting to discuss the MacArthur Park project at the Mills Rec Room on Wednesday, October 11th, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Churchill Park Concepts will be presented by the consultant with an intent to develop a prioritized list of park improvements that will proceed to final design. In planning, the Public Arts and Culture Commission has released a call for artists to submit pieces for the 2024 exhibit of the City Hall Gallery. The theme of the upcoming installation is time. The call for artists can be found on the Public Arts and Culture webpage. Submissions are due October 8th. That concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Orzak. Any questions or comments for the city manager? Items of old business, Commissioners. Do you have any items of old business? Any items of new business, Commissioners? Any items of new business? Under new business, I would like to thank both Commissioner Waddington and Commissioner Pajali for chairing this awards that we did, that we had earlier in our agenda. This is the third year that we've done that, and I think most of you out there have heard me say that this city runs on the backs of hundreds of volunteers. Tonight, we celebrated five of those outstanding volunteers. There are probably 50 more out there, and I hope that as future commissions feel an obligation to find those, those other Volunteer of the Year people going forward once, once we move on. It's so important to a community to have volunteers connected like these folks were, and what a, what an interesting cross-section we saw in these, in these five people. They, they make us proud, as do all of our volunteers. Any additional items of new business? If not, we will entertain comments from the audience on any item pertaining to city business. I would ask that you keep your remarks to three minutes.
Nick Famular, 2340 River Ave. Up here wondering what's going on with Pike Creek watershed. I know they went through the 100-year storm and all that, but we got two inches of rain on the 18th, and I flooded again because of that property. At what point do I got to stop spending my money on them? I, I need some answers on one way or another. You guys are telling me to wait, but how many more times do I need to take the day off work? Do I need to pay for cleanup? Do I need to do this until you guys figure this out? And my next question would be, what happens when, because I keep hearing the owner is all kinds of money, so he decides not to take the $140,000 and he didn't do the stuff the way it is according to the way it was supposed to do, then what happens? Just, is that it? You know, that's the one thing you guys told me is they haven't given the money yet, and if that goes away, what happens then? But I'm still flooding, and I don't have time to keep waiting. What do we got to do to let them do it? There's still progress going on down there, still trying to open it, and, and he had said he was putting no more money into the drainage. He didn't do it right to begin with. We're not asking him to put more money into it, we're asking him to do it right. Three properties come my way. His three properties completely, I got video, whole thing. I sent it to you, I don't know if you got it, apparently. I've tried to contact you guys, nobody will call back. So I'm trying to figure out what I got to do to fix this.
I can share with you, sir, that any communication that you have moving forward should not be with any of us or should not be with the city manager, it should be with our law director.
Why is that?
And the reason for that is the moment that you threaten this city.
I didn't threaten nobody.
With, with obtaining, with filing a lawsuit.
I don't have a lawsuit. I'm trying to figure out how to fix this with you guys. That's why I came in day one when we said it was going to be a problem, months and months and months and months, and years ago when the project started, and we came in again expressing our concerns with this problem. We have the problem now. I never threatened nothing. I said I don't know what to do, because I'm a common person that doesn't know what to do, and if you're going to, I never threatened once that I threatened anybody. I'm just trying to figure out what I'm doing to make this process work. I, I actually sent an apology letter to Mr. Schneider, and he sent me back a crappy letter after that. And then there again, I'm trying to do the right thing, and you're sitting here telling me I'm still doing the wrong thing? Why can't I talk to you? That's why I'm here. I didn't threaten nobody. We need to figure this out. I didn't threaten anybody with a lawyer. I just, in my mind, I don't know what to do, and that was one of the things that came out of my mind was, hey, is this what I need to do? I don't know. I wasn't threatening nobody. Zero. Did I threaten anybody? Go back, look through the emails.
And perhaps this could be ramped down very easily by you having a conversation with our law director.
This needs to be ramped down by being fixed, because it shouldn't be going forward with the way it is. I'm flooding because of the two inches of rain flooded in my hole. I got videos, I got pictures, you can see the water going on to my neighbor's property. Is that right? I mean, is that, is that what you're supposed to do when you put in a building? Mr. Kraft down there had to do everything right. Mr. Herbst, when he started filling in dirt over there, you guys were all over him about a silk fence, and you're going to let a parking lot go in? Does that go back on Holcomb? Does that go back on who put it in? Who does that go back on? They did not do it according to your guys' plans. Your guys' prints are what they're supposed to go by, and they didn't go by that, and now I have major issues. And now I have major issues. I fought your guys' water. I spent tens of thousands of dollars to stop your guys' water from your stuff flooding me. Mother Nature, I spent tens of thousands of dollars there. I got to spend more money because you guys let this place go in before you put any infrastructure down there. There is no storm, sewer, form of die-in, nothing. I don't, I don't get it. I mean, is it because of who it is? I've seen a lot of jobs in this town. I've been on hundreds of them, and we go through inspections, and when I go through an inspection, it's got to be right. If it's not right, they make me make it right, or they don't open. I don't understand how somebody else, is there another set of rules for other people? I don't know. That's what I don't get, and I would love to know how it all works.
I think our law director will be rather happy to meet with you on that issue.
Again, why do I got to go to the law director? I asked, I've never threatened anybody. I don't understand that. I was trying to solve this with you guys. You're the one that approached me and said you were going to work with me, and then I got nothing from you. You ghosted me.
The moment that I was advised that you mentioned obtaining an attorney...
And I didn't know what I was saying, because I'm a common human. I don't deal with this every day, and I'm sorry. I apologized after that.[1666.33]